All right, guys.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our town hall. As you may notice, Orange Mine's background looks a little bit different tonight. That's because we're up in Mount Shasta, doing a lot for the recall. And I want to stress for political correctness, we are in hotel rooms, but in separate ones. Let's be clear on that, Orin.
Absolutely. Glad to be here tonight. What a wonderful drive. I just have to say that coming up over the, you know, the past coming into Shasta city up here. And, you know, what a difference. I'm glad to be in Northern California and it's a wonderful day. It's, it's, the weather's beautiful, it's clear up here. It's clean air and what a, what a great drive it was in meeting, getting out there and being able to actually meet and drop off some yard signs for the recall and bumper stickers and things to people along the way up by five as we, as we work our way north.
It really is amazing and it's a pleasure to be up here and really forget sometimes because as you know, folks know, I live in the LA area. Nothing wrong with LA, but it's a different kind of beauty up here in Northern California. You may also hear tonight or see that Orin and I look a little bit jagged. No, we haven't changed our appearance. That's because our bandwidth is low and that doesn't mean we're out of time. It's a technical term that you'll notice that our pictures aren't coming in as clear, but it's kind of like the Rovian reporter. Orin, I want to start off with a couple of things, if you don't mind, before we get to our guests.
Absolutely.
What really amazes me, and I don't think we sometimes us who sign the recall and push it gives our, we kind of forget and all the hullabaloo as we go on to the next thing. When you watch those videos, you really forget in addition to the signatures and the gition, it seems like we do like the podcast town hall. How we've kind of, a culture has sprung up around this. And I want to be clear, things like the songs that you hear and many of the banners and poems that are written. These aren't things Orin and I have asked people to do. It's kind of, you might, well, we guess what we still call a counterculture against Gavin Newsom. It's really kind of amazing how creative the public has been over this whole journey, don't you think, Orin?
Yeah, no, it's been, it's, it's incredible. Every step of the way, you know, people came out of the woodworks with, with different things, different talents, different, you know, skillsets that they brought to the table. And, you know, it's a conglomeration of everybody's effort coming together towards one objective. And that's what's made us successful.
Right, that's been a lot of our theme. It's fascinating to see how many people have come together for one purpose, one drive. We used to say one petition, one mission, but we know that the recall election is coming up. So now for everybody out there, as I say continuously and over and over again, it is our fight for two things. And let's be clear here, we need people to go out and vote. We need them to vote yes to recall Gavin. And I also want to say of the 2.1 million 75,000 people that signed the petition, I'm sorely disappointed in 38 of them. And Orin, you know why, right?
I think it's up to about 42 or 44 now, but under 50.
Then I sit corrected, in case you wonder what the heck this rambling guy is talking about. In fact, Epic Times did an article this week, eight people in Orange County have withdrawn their signatures. And so in the 30 day period that Gavin Newsom had to put his political machine up and throw stuff out. Sure, you, and Orin, you got to admit, when one of our volunteers or good ones was probing around, looking for signatures. I'm like, I kind of thought that the big machine would have gotten a little more than, shall we say, 45?
Yeah, you know what? I was actually expecting a much more robust effort on their part with the resources that they have pouring in their campaign. They knew it was a lost cause. They didn't even try, they didn't even, they, they didn't go out there and even make an effort to rescind their signature or get people to rescind their signatures, which is really telling. And I think that they turned their nose up at doing this strategically because they knew that what it would look like. Gavin's all about bad optics, but it would be really bad optics if they put their heart and soul and their backing and their, and their, you know, effort and resources into a signature gathering drive that had no chance of success. And that is a success of this team because we not only hit the ball, we hit it hard, we knocked it out of the park. This was a home run. It was, it is a winning home run and it's a game changer in California.
Exactly, and let's be clear on a couple of things out there. And we say this over and over again, we, the people have done the recall and are up against, as we know, and I don't want to say democratic, I just want to say a big machine in California. Let's put it that way. So here's a couple of realities and I see a lot on the chat tonight about the election. Let me tell you something, okay? As we've talked about before, there's lawsuits in motion that may or may not affect this recall election. Cause it looks like the recall election may be as soon as September 14th. Now, don't rush out and use a permanent marker on your calendar yet, but we think that may be the date. But here's what's really important, as Robin's going to talk about in a bit, probably a surprise to Robin. We're going to talk about merchandising, getting the word out, mechanisms that we continuously said. Our mission for the next 60, 90 days is to make sure that we outwit them. We need to raise money, but let's face it, Netflix wrote him a check for three million bucks. So unless, I don't know who that would be, maybe Forbes, because he did a good video about us, writes us a check for three million bucks. Chances are they're going to outraise us, but we're going to outwit their posteriors. Let's be really clear on that. We are going to outwit them, but it takes all of us together to do that. That means, and we all hear the terms ballot harvesting, oh my God, well, screw it. Go door to door and find out who the hell is going to vote and ask if you have picked up ballot up. It's not like you need a special harvesting machine, if I might correct Orin. There's no big combine that you need, something you drive down the street that sucks ballots up like one of those street sweep machines. I'm sure the Democrats are working on it, but they don't have that yet. So the reality is we have to make sure that we do what we can to get one. Sorry, Republicans, make sure you vote. About 75% of these votes, so get a hold of that, we have a mechanism to do that. Make sure all the Democrats that don't like Newsom, that are Indians, get out and vote. The NPPs, the undecided, get out and vote, vote yes. It's our state to take back, we've lots of ways to do that. We're going to talk about mechanisms that we put in place in just the last week. But in the meantime, Orin, why don't you go ahead and introduce our guest, or you know me, I'll be talking all night long.
Mark Aing is joining us and, and Mark is, is an activist down in the Los Angeles areas, or is that Orange County, Mark?
Both.
Welcome aboard and you know what? There's nobody that's going to be able to introduce you or explain what you're doing and, and why you're with us tonight better than yourself. You have the floor, my friend.
Thanks so much, Orin, I appreciate you guys and I, I don't know how to explain what I do, but I'm pretty much activist, donor activist and started, kind of, I, I started volunteering probably like 20 years ago, really on, started with mostly Bush's reelection, but then really ramping up when I saw the threat that was Obama. And I started to see, you know, it's getting really bad where the young people are completely clueless about things like communism and clueless about how identity politics is being used to play a big segment of the population. And sadly, it, it became a phenomenon in 2008 where we elected a president that had no real qualifications and went in and started messing with our healthcare system. And that just over the years allowed me to, you know, get more and more active. You know, I walked precinct, precincts for Craig Huey and that special election up and down those hills in Hermosa Beach and Redondo Beach to defeat Janice Hahn. But sadly, I started to see California was slipping out of our reach. So you don't know how happy I am that now with recall Newsom, we were able to get more Democrats to sign the recall than Republicans showing a real sea change. And also I was very excited last year with Prop 16, I was heavily involved in that campaign and did a lot of media appearances, talk about Prop 16's effect on, you know, our society. And that was the affirmative action proposition. And we basically won that conservative ballot proposition by 14 points with the same electorate that voted for Biden by 29. So it kind of gave me a lot of hope that, you know, I think Californians are realizing that they are somewhat conservative. And the Republican brand sadly is very much dead in the state. Not saying that it can't come back to life, but right now it's pretty dormant to the point that we have, Orange County has been the biggest battleground. That's really what ramped up my activism in 2016 is obviously I love Trump. I thought he was a really great, you know, I'm a populist at heart. So when Trump came on board, I said, oh, this is a, you know, really, he's talking about the right things. And, but what really alarmed me in 2016 was the fact that we had Hillary winning Orange County by eight points. And that was the first time Orange County voted Democrat since FDR. So what I realized was there is a need and we need to kind of get back involved with activism and make sure that we can change the culture. Because I see a lot of people in this chat box are talking about, oh, paper ballots, this and that, blah, blah, blah. Well, I'm going to rebut that. If you don't have a strong message and if you don't have a strong campaign to start with, then you're going to lose. So you're going to focus on all the symptoms, but you're not going to get to the root cause of the problem. And there's a bigger problem in California and that problem is that we lost the culture. The culture has been so left for many years before it manifested in, you know, in the voting. So we need to actually do stuff like I'm doing, you know, and I'm just, you know, I run my own business. I'm not, you know, I'm not a political consultant or, you know, someone that, that works in the industry. I go out and I, on my spare time, do networking and throw events. And that grew over the last five years because I saw more and more people that understood where I stood in my values come follow me and come to our events and become, you know, active members of what I'm doing locally. So I know there's a lot of efforts for neighborhood precinct, Patriot precinct projects, stuff like that is what's going to be ultimately effective in the long run. The problem with conservatives is conservatives have stayed pretty much in their cocoons the last generation. They haven't talked to their kids while their kids are getting indoctrinated in the schools. That's half of the equation. But I also know so many Republican conservative parents that have talked to their kids and that have been actively rebutting the stuff that they're getting from the schools and have raised conservatives. So you really have no excuse, I'm sorry to be harsh like this, but you have no excuse if your own family members have become leftists. Okay, you, you have, and my parents were very good about it and they weren't nagging me to death. They talked to me and they said, this is ridiculous, here's why it's ridiculous. And I, my little pea brain, as a teenager, I'm like, oh, okay. You know, so I think that, that what's happening right now is the left has the floor. And they've had the floor for about 25 years unchecked, putting their, injecting their values into the school system, into Hollywood, into now every aspect and every corner of society. So we need to go out and actually get active and be effective in our activism. Yelling very loud to an audience that you don't know and don't understand where they're at mentally is very ineffective. And I think that is what ultimately was the problem with a lot of, you know, why the recall for Newsom didn't take off until we got all hands on board and got people to actually even want to engage independents and Democrats on the issues. And I think there are so many issues to talk about locally, at least here. We have a simultaneous recall for our DA Gascon, who has basically caused our streets to become less safe. That is a great entryway to talk to people. Those of you up in NorCal in San Francisco, San Francisco is probably the best example Republicans and conservatives have to talk about the failure of democratic policies or the failure of Newsom policies. So I think that, you know, we really need to check our arrogance at times when we feel like, oh, they just don't get it. And yes, it's frustrating, we know the truth, we're right, but we probably need to, to, to become teachers, to become people that can hold some hands. And even though it's frustrating, hold their hands to the truth. And that's certainly what we're doing, you know, here in, on the ground. So for example, one of the funniest things is obviously Newsom's terrible policies regarding homelessness has affected a lot of the liberal elites. So in Palisades, there's a group now that is recalling one of our, one of our city councilmen named Mike Bonin. And Mike Bonin is LGBT and very far left, but what he's doing is he's putting all the homeless encampments on Will Rogers State Beach. So that's like right in front of where the, the elite's beach is and they're like, well, we don't want this. So guess what? Now a lot of those people are open to voting Republican and voting against Newsom, voting against general policies that are no good for their own lives. So I hate that now we are, you know, have, we're in such a bad place, but being in that bad place is the, is the ability now to, to affect change and to point to the failure of policies. They can't throw it on Schwarzenegger anymore, they cannot throw it on Trump. Everything right now is Democrat control from state to every legislature, the legislature, they have a super mega majority at this point. Well, they need no Republican votes to do whatever they want. And federally, we have, you know, Biden and the Democrats in control of Senate and House. Right now is the time for us activists to get out there and spread the message. So I'm very excited, yesterday we did a big mask burning. So we were in, in Huntington Beach and, you know, they have bonfire pits there. So, you know, one of my, one of the recall Newsom volunteers, my friend Regina reached out to me and she said, you know, for the opening day on the June 15th, why don't we make some noise and, you know, do a bonfire and burn our masks? And I said, wow, this would be a great opportunity to get the media out. So I got ABC, Fox and KTLA, local stations to cover our mask burning. And the great part is they covered, you know, my frustrations with Newsom. And very interesting though, Fox went and actually referenced the recall Newsom campaign because they're much, they're a little more right leaning. And ABC chose to not even mention that, but I think the video footage caught some of our signs of your observant, you'd see it. But it's very interesting, you've got to know, it's another thing that I encourage conservatives to do, talk to your local press. Stop being like, oh, the press is evil. Because the, you know, the press, yeah, the press is more sloppy than they're evil. So I recommend everyone go out and engage, especially if you have local Newsom rallies and local, you know, activities. Even if you're doing like a Fourth of July barbecue, for example, that would be great to call them and have them cover it. Because then people at least know, hey, we exist, we're doing stuff, we're active. And that is probably a lost opportunity that a lot of us hardworking volunteers and activists have missed. So I really, I really want to, you know, people to, to fight effectively and also to interact with independents and Democrats. Cause a lot of them right now, especially the ones that are even slightly frustrated, could be our future Republican voters. And I've seen this already with my organization. I started it in 2017 as a business networking organization, also to be slightly political. I didn't expect to be as political as I am today, but I can tell you, I have a rabid group of Asian business owners that were formerly Democrats that are now like hardcore Republicans. To the point that they were crying when Trump lost in November, you know? But I was like, you know, you know, guys, calm down. I followed politics for years, I understand being upset when your guy loses, but there's also opportunities. Like I started some of the first Tea Party rallies back in, in, back in 2010. And it was amazing to see that energy. So whenever when we're, we're the out party, we seem to do a lot better. So in terms of getting our message out and getting new people. So right now is a renaissance, it's a time, a really good time to, you know, go out there and educate our community on our values, to do things, to work better together with Republicans. Another thing I wanted to mention in my talk today is please stop infighting. Republicans tend to love to fight with each other. And I think especially in this state, there's this sort of like defensiveness that you want to keep, you know, you're, you're busy fighting the leftist agenda constantly. But then you misdirect that fight and that anger to other Republicans and then cause all of these issues and a waste time. And then it causes the left to then just capitalize on those divisions. We had that in Orange County with our supervisor race with, you know, an entrenched incumbent, Morlock that lost the supervisor race to, to other Republicans that ran. You know, if, if people would just stop and talk to each other and look at the big picture versus, oh, what is, you know, what do I want? And what is best for me, then we would do so much better and win races and not unnecessarily lose certain, certain seats. If we just talked and worked together. And it doesn't mean we have to be joined at the hip. I think a lot of people feel like, oh, I need to be best friends with, no, you're not going to like everyone, but at least understand what other people are doing and try to support it, even if it's tangentially, even if it's from a distance. You know, we're all in it for the same cause, there is no need to keep infighting and to tear other Republicans down. So that is something I've noticed in my years of activism that's been very, very common that we need to address. And the left loves to use identity politics. Sadly, that is the norm of the culture today. I hate it, I think it's stupid, I've always been the type of person that's like, you know, ah, do we have to mention race? But at the same time, that is where the culture is at. That's why I kind of started, when I started my organization, I was like, do I name it an Asian name? I hate that, it's weird. It's, it's like, but then I realized that within the different factions, the Democrats have widened so much to different communities, especially the Hispanic community in California. That somehow they're good for the minorities and everyone else, the Republicans are not. We need to talk to those because those people, especially in the Hispanic community, it surprised me last year with Prop 16. We did a lot of research and we found out that, you know, because obviously we won the state by 57, 57% to 43. So I was curious, who is the majority? How do we get, you know, the majority to come, come on board? And really what we found was we found a lot of coalitions came on board with us. So one of them was the Latina woman. Latina woman hated affirmative action because a lot of them have lives and careers that were built off of going to trade school. So I was pretty impressed by that statistic when we did our postmortem analysis. And I said, wow, these Latino women really didn't like other people leapfrogging them based on race. And then the second part was they did not like it when they would, when they were seen as getting a job only because of affirmative action. They have a sense of pride, there are maybe single mothers taking care of their children, but they have a sense of pride too. And that's the American spirit, right? That's what we all have in common is you don't want to be given a handout and people looking at you saying, you're only where you are because of your, of the handout, right? So I think that we need to be better about going into different communities and waking people up that are mostly uninformed. And I always say this about California, it's California's biggest enemy is not Democrats, it's apathy. I lived in other states and I, I found it, you know, I lived in New Jersey and Chris Christie was my governor and I got involved in, you know, when, when I was in New York and New Jersey for five years. I felt that the average person out there was much more politically astute, politically aware than the average person in California. That is why Arnold Schwarzenegger had to be our candidate in order to get a shot to win statewide. Because honestly, most Californians are busy hooked on entertainment and they don't care about political issues. And now with mail-in ballots and with the ease of voting, everyone's filling in those bubbles with not, without ever understanding any of those consequences of filling out certain bubbles. I've certainly, I'm working on the Gascon campaign right now, recall Gascon. And so many of the victims' moms were actually voted for Gascon. I'm like, how could you be so stupid? How did you, he clearly was telling people he was going to get released criminals onto the streets. Did you not believe him? But that is because of apathy and that is same with Governor Newsom. I think a lot of people were, you know, just like, well, the Democrats, they're, they're the better party, let's just bubble in for him. You know, it didn't help that Cox ran a lifeless campaign, but you know, still, you know, he won 20, by 20 points because the baseline of where California is, is very, was very apathetic. And that's why, you know, someone like him could get in. So really our job right now is to wake people up, is to get to different communities, have conversations with people. And it doesn't mean saying, I'm right, my beliefs are correct and you're wrong, you suck. Which is where some people on our side that get too emotional end up doing. Like for example, I'm going to say something that's very, you may disagree with me, but I don't like Ben Shapiro. Okay, I love where he stands on things, but I think his approach is so damn condescending. And that it turns off a lot of people from hearing the good things that he has to say. And I think here in California, especially with low info voters, you really have to go in with a more gentle approach and say, I totally understand where you're coming from, but... Dot, 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 and then you can inject the little things. But do you really believe that we should be releasing criminals? Because our state prisons are overcrowded after they serve for 15 years, even after there were serial killers and killed like a bunch of people? I mean, little questions like that, I think go a long way. Do you really believe that now that we know that masks were pretty ineffective, that we should have gone through all of that, the last year and a half, being obsessive about masks? I mean, questions like that without putting out a statement go a long way into shifting people into our corner. So I hope that we're able to do that and get people on a one-on-one basis on our neighborhood precincts. I know there's a lot of people on this call, I assume we're all of like minds. But what I always want to tell fellow activists is you got to be stealth. You know, smart, wise as a serpent, you know, you have to be, you have to be effective and look at the results. Am I net-net getting more people into our line of thinking? Or am I pushing them away to get them more polarized, to get more people to be against Republicans and conservatives? And to further a very false narrative that we're all racist, xenophobic, bigoted, all of that stuff. I mean, that is the stuff they peddle out there and we all know the truth, but we have to communicate the truth. So that's pretty much the, what I had. I'm happy to take questions and, you know, be, answer anything that you guys want to throw at me.
Mark, thanks, we're going to ask people to put some questions in the chat room here, cover a lot there. I want to stress one very powerful point I was trying to break in, you made, that gets lost a lot in the shuffle. Let's be clear, Proposition 16 was on the presidential ballot. Okay, correct? And that's real important to note because I talk all the time how to get this recall done. It isn't about identity politics, but it's interesting. Because here's the reality, I don't give a rodent's posterior quasi polite language for you know what, everybody. What people say, they don't vote for Gascon, the votes don't add up, but on propositions and for the president, we tend to get all the people voting. Now put your Biden-Trump stuff down for a second. Here's what Mark said that's really important. Screw identity politics, regardless, 57%, which I don't care how you look at it, is an overwhelming majority. This is real important to the recall, 57% of the people said, you know what, we're not kind of going with this, so shall we call it leftist agenda? Now, 57% for those of you keeping score at home, of about 18 million was about nine to 10 million votes. Understand how important that is. Mark, we're going to roll to what people could do here in a second, but I want you to dwell on this. We need about eight million people to participate and vote yes to get Newsom out of office. It's very clear, a lot of talk, election fraud, what are we going to do? Here's what we're going to do, we need to get LA out to vote. Okay, it's amazing that LA got out to vote at all. Here's a statistic for you as you march the streets, and then I'm going to roll to Robin here before we run out of time. There are 10 million people in Los Angeles County. There are only, there's seven and a half million people eligible to vote. Only 5.3 million of them are registered to vote. Most people, they don't give a damn, it's that simple, okay? But as Mark pointed out, in that election, Mark will give you one more minute, then we've got to roll here, but you hear me out, okay? We can get this done by simply getting to everybody who share the same values. I don't care what your ethnicity is, I don't care where church you go to. I don't care what your ethnicity is, I don't care where church you go to, if you give a damn about California, you want Newsom out. Mark, you got thirty seconds, brother.
Yeah, I wanted to try to piggyback off that, Mike. Great, great, uh, message there. Just so you know, um, you know, Prop, Prop sixteen, success, I think, had to do with, uh, the fact that we're beyond certain racial conversations that people wanna, wanna act like it's still nineteen sixty. And, uh, really, let's talk about race. Let's not be afraid to do like what I'm doing this Saturday is there's a holiday called Juneteenth that they're making a big deal out of, Black Emancipation. Okay, so I'm doing an event and I'm basically trying to co-opt it. And I'm doing an event. Um, we're gonna have Recall Newsom stuff, Recall Gascon, and basically wake people up to say, is that, is, um, it, are we really free? Are the blacks really free when they are threatened with, uh, gang violence every day in inner city streets? And shootings have increased like two hundred percent in the last year. I mean, all of these things, we need to be able to go into their turf and use their language and basically turn it back around and call them out on their hypocrisy. Cause I have a sick Democrat hypocrisy.
Absolutely, Mark. And I also wanna break down, as I say quite often, and I'm gonna go a different kind of route here, publicly doing this. Um, there's eleven million people in California over the age of fifty. And I don't know of anybody in any race, anywhere over the age of fifty that wants this kind of crap. Or has kids, or has a wife, or has a home. And we, and even the Republicans now are starting to practice. Well, let's break it into the category because it works well for the Democrats. No. Robin, how are you doing tonight? Mark, thank you, stay with us. I'm glad you're on.
If, if I could chime in, I just wanna dovetail into what you just said, uh, Mike. Paula had mentioned in the chat that, you know, Mark needs to realize that there's a lot of people over fifty-five and sixty years old who don't move like a young person. But then in the same breath, Paula says, well, Mark is generalizing now. And, okay, so is it generalizing that people over fifty-five and sixty don't move as quick as young people?
I didn't say that.
No, I know, I know. I just thought it was funny.
Cause honestly, Republicans, instead of working towards a solution, they wanna pick on every little thing and instead of seeing the big picture.
Yeah, and I thought it was funny that you're, you're being accused of generalizing, but the same person that made the accusation made a.
That's called hypocrisy, Republican hypocrisy.
Yeah, but, uh, Paula said she left, she may still be here. Paula, you did have some really good points. And that does dovetail in with what Mike is saying. There are a lot of people fifty-five, sixty and older. Um, and this is the demographics of the people that are making decisions in our state right now, uh, the voting public.
Okay, I wanna keep a little on track tonight because, Orin, you're starting to black in and out. I don't mean literally, but I mean metaphorically, and I think my bandwidth is going too. So as more people check into the inward rat. I'm really seeing your bandwidth is low, et cetera. Robin, you've got some important announcements about merchandise. And this is really important, not only merchandise, but how you can take action. Don't care what race, color, creed, age, talk to us about that. Because we need to start getting the word out, no matter who the hell you are. We need to recall Gavin. Robin, you're on the air.
Thanks, Mike. It's really critical that we are visible throughout the state, north to south. And we have many vehicles in the way of merchandise that will help accomplish that. From bumper stickers to door hangers, to lawn signs, three-by-five flags, car magnets. Um, we're having trifles reprinted. There's Kevin Kiley's book. And we have remit envelopes, but here's one of our little bumper stickers, or more ideally go in your window. And these are our remit envelopes. And I just wanna let everyone know, for those that join our Tuesday calls because they're a regional manager or a lead in the county or an active volunteer, they know where to get merchandise. But if you're listening to this call and you think, wow, I'd love to get some, but where do I go? What I'd like to encourage you to do is go to recallgavin2020.com. Click on county information and you will find the lead coordinator in your county. You can email them or phone them and put in an order for merchandise. And they will make sure that you're out a way to get that to you. For those of you actively working the recall, you're aware that we have a shared drive where all of our volunteers and our county leads can order merchandise. And they're getting this to the public in multiple ways. They have people emailing them, some are sending up event booths. And some people are canvassing areas and have information with them in their vehicles. So those are some key ways. The other thing I'd like to encourage you to do is if you're a business owner, reach out to your county coordinator. And if you would like to have lawn signs or bumper stickers and most importantly are trifold brochures in your place of business to encourage people, the importance of voting for the recall. These are our trifold information brochures. And we also have a QR code where people can scan it to donate. But reach out to your county coordinator if you're a business owner and they will make certain someone brings you trifles. You can also go to our website and print these on your own. There's Take Action and under Take Action, you will see Download, Do It Yourself, DIY Graphics. So many of our graphics are available there that you can print on your own and have in your business as well, or use for your upcoming events. So there's a lot of ways to reach out, but remember, we really need to be visible north to south in all fifty-eight counties. You can also email me and my email is robin dot recallgavin2020 at gmail dot com. So, and I'm on the Butte County. If you can't remember that or I went too fast, click on county information. And under Butte County, you'll find my name there. So that's all I have. We have a lot of information coming and a lot of merchandise. And let's shock everyone. It's so exciting when I'm driving down the street and I see one of our big three-by-five li- flags waving. Or you see a bumper sticker go by. So get out there, spread the word and let's get visible. Mike.
Flags, we have them in. Banners, we have them in. They're being distributed all over Southern California. I've got a whole case with me up here. Orin's bringing some up. This is the key. Now, I wanna stress this again, you have to spread the word. I see a lot of stuff, oh my God, how are we gonna get it done? Well, let me tell you something, everybody listening. If three months ago, we hadn't qualified, we wouldn't have this fine friggin' problem we have right now of trying to get this Yala out of office. So thank you, everybody out there for giving Gavin Newsom this problem. So I'm gonna tell everybody out there right now, I'm getting to you, Orin, I see your finger waving, all right? I'm on a roll, okay? I'm gonna tell you again. Yep, we have to spread the word. We have to spread the word. We have to recall, recall and replace. Orin, go ahead.
Uh, there's some people asking about merchandise and things like that. And I just wanna say that, and I, I really want to impress upon everybody. We have very limited budget. Uh, we're, we're bringing in one dollar for every seventy dollars the governor's bringing in. Uh, the more money we be, get back through the remit envelopes or through donations on our website, the more we, ability we have to spread this stuff out throughout the state. I'm personally driving this stuff up and down I five, dropping it off to people. And that's not, you know, feasible when we have a, a possibility that this election could happen in the next hundred days. There is other stuff out there available. Somebody asked about, uh, you know, a Recall Gavin mug or a hat or a t-shirt and stuff like that. We're not providing that store. If you want some of those items, there is, uh, too much competition out there. There's, but there's some wonderful options and very reasonable. Just go to Amazon. Type in Recall Gavin in the search bar and there are some, some, you know, entrepreneurs out there that are trying to make a buck and none of the money is gonna come into the campaign. I get that. But at least you get a shirt and at least it carries the message out into the public. And that's a good thing. Um, as far as the flags go, we have four thousand flags. That's gonna go quick. Um, so don't, you know, depend on us to get you that stuff. Uh, the, we're, the more money we bring in, the more merchandise we can order, it takes us. There's a lag time between the order and when we get it and when we get it out into the field. So if you need it, if you want it now, don't wait for it. Order it on Amazon, get it, pr- print the stuff up at your local printer. There's DIY graphics on our website under the Take Action tab. And you can go to the website, download that information, print it, get your yard sign, get the message out. That's the most important. Um, it, that we, we spread the word. You can download the PDF for the flyer. Somebody said they just discovered they can print on both sides of the paper at home. That's beautiful. That's how we got this recall done because people took action at home on their own accord and they printed stuff. They printed the, the petition and mailed it in to us and they got it done. And we're just asking you to take it to the next level, phase two, get those printed. Uh, we're passing out as much as we can, as quick as we can. We have a hundred and fifty thousand door hangers that we're gonna be passing out up and down the state. But again, you don't have to wait for us to print up the material that you need. If you wanna start canvassing right here, right now, this is the crunch time. This is when we need everybody out doing it.
We have the canvassing information. We can't get everything across. Thanks, Orin. Um, we can't get everything across in just a little bit of time. We have database requests, we have county leads, we set the structure in place. But I gotta tell you, it's not up to Mark, it's not up to Orin, it's not up to Robin, it's not even up to Gavin Newsom. Shocking. It's up to us, the people. And for everybody here tonight, you gotta keep spreading the word. It's kinda like religion, okay? We have sixty to ninety days to change this state. We've kicked down the door and given everybody the opportunity. We can give you a million different banners, we can do a million different things. It's up to we, the people. Get more people to listen to this podcast. Couple thousand on Facebook isn't enough. Get more people to listen to our radio show, not just like to just hear my great quips. But so they can get the message and hear about the issues and call in and we can get those stories. It's time to unite California. Orin, is that telling me our radio show's number one or you have something else to say?
I just wanted to, to thank Mark. Um, you know, you were spot on with so much, everything that you said. There was so much I wanted to chime in with because it, it either, you know, it echoed things that I've been saying for a long time. And I'm sure that you put words to a lot of people's thoughts. And, you know, apathy, when you said apathy is the number one killer of the Republican Party or the conservative movement in California, you're absolutely right. But I just wanna put it out there. You know, the, the media loves to paint California blue. And I'm calling bullshit on that because California has a conservative backbone. We voted for a lot of conservative things. We voted for the death penalty. We voted for it to be maintained and streamlined. And this governor went in and, and dismantled it unilaterally, overrode the will of the people. Um, you know, we voted for English as the official language. We voted for sanctity of marriage. We voted for, you know, these are all, regardless of how you fit on this call, um, you know, in the political spectrum. The fact is, California constantly, continuously votes conservative. But yet you have this narrative in the media that, and the more they convince, they try and convince you that California is a deep blue state. Okay, I'm, I'm saying, no, that's not accurate and it's not factual.
I agree with you, Orin. We won every conservative ballot proposition last election. In a year, the Biden won by twenty-nine points. We won every proposition.
Yep, and we're gonna win this recall.
Again, we won it because the key was on the propositions. People got out and vote. So we have to, in the special election, as soon as we get the date, don't go, oh my God, the date's here, what are we gonna do? Vote. Take it into your own hands, everybody. We, the people.
And I cut Robin off earlier, but.
Dick Robin's typing. Robin, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm used to it. Just kidding you.
I thought you would be. We're all fired up. Listen, everybody.
Put in the chat, just one last thing. Orin mentioned Amazon. But we also, on our website, recallgavin2020.com, under About Us, there's a merchandise link that will take you directly to Zazzle and there's tons of stuff out there. So you have options.
That's right. There's a million ways to do it. We've got merchandise coming and we're gonna ship direct. Really, the most important thing are the banners, signs, shirts, but get those trifles out there. Print them out and spread the word. Alertness is one thing, but spreading the word to the trifle. Orin, I'm gonna go ahead and wrap this up if you don't mind, because we have a hungry attorney waiting.
I just wanna say that when, when people donate to recallgavin2020.com, you need to know that your money is going directly into flags, uh, yard signs, bumper stickers, trifles. We literally just spent in upwards of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars getting this stuff printed and made to be distributed throughout the state. And that tapped us out as far as our budget goes for merchandise right now. So now we have to wait for funding to come in. So we can make another order. I wanna make orders back to back to back, but fact is, um, you know, we're stalemate because we don't have the funding to be able to do that. But the more we can do that, the more we can reach out and broaden our scope. And if we had the sufficient funding for television ads or additional radio ads up and down the state, we're gonna put those to, to, uh, work for you. And I'll end with that. God bless everybody. Good night. Mike, turn it back over to you to wrap it up.
Okay, remember, any information you need on counties, it's at recallgavin2020.com. And in honor of Mark tonight, thank you so much for all you said. I wanna end you with an old line. There's an old bumper sticker that's stuck in my mind and here it is. It said, apathy is dead, but who cares? So the reality is, let's make apathy dead because we, the people care. It's time it went out and took California back. You won't see me, but you'll see a lot of us on this Friday's radio show, Friday nights of the French Laundry. Remember to tune in, seven to nine, KABC, streaming everywhere. Stay in touch with the movement. Go to recallgavin2020.com, contribute, participate and take our state back because God bless us all. We're all Californians. Good night now.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Orin. Robin.
Hey, good job, man.